Okay, it's six o'clock. I'm gonna call the special meeting to order for September 5th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gentry. Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here. Okay, we have a forum. With that, we'll go to the item on the agenda. Change order number one to the contract development marshal roofing. Mr. Rancasse.
Thank you. We have a one large project that's not complete yet this summer, and that's the Connie McCave and Flat Roof Restoration. And while working on that project and taking care of the some of the replacement of wet insulation, we discovered some conditions that warranted further work where we had to be a little intrusive to some enclosures around the roof and reconstruct them to avoid further moisture penetration. And the reason for the special meeting is we're concerned that if we have a significant windstorm, there could be further damage, and we would like to get that fixed as soon as possible. This price has been scrutinized for quite a while. It was started out a lot higher. I think this is a reasonable price for this work to be done.
Are there any questions or comments about it? Okay. Well, with that, I will make a motion to approve change order number one as presented in the agenda. Second from, sorry, Mr. Troy. Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yes.
Mr. Gentry.
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano.
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Yes.
Mr. Garin.
Yes.
Mr. Fleck.
Yes. Okay, that motion carries. Next item is any public comment related to this special meeting? Is there any public comment? Okay, there being none, then at 6:03, I will make a motion to adjourn. Second from Mr. Quagliano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we are adjourned. All right, two minutes early. Now, we will move on to the committee of the whole. And, uh, let's pop that up, hang on. Okay, let's have a, it is 6:03, I'll call to order the meeting for September 5th, 2019 for the committee of the whole. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Yeah.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here. Okay, and with that, we have the pledge of allegiance, and I believe we have some Huntley High School students that will be joining us. Mr. Bealan.
Good evening. We have some members from our Vanguard program that will be leading us into place tonight. Yeah, come on up. Ms... While they're headed up, I would like to invite Ms. Alyssa Cassir to come up as well. She's one of our teachers, one of our first teachers here in the Vanguard program, and has worked tirelessly with a number of other teachers to get this program to where it is today. And so I just want to publicly thank them for all of their hard work and dedication to the program.
So, our Vanguard Vision Program was a concept, an idea about two and a half, three years ago, that students should have flexibility in their learning, and they should have voice and choice, and they should have the ability to advance through curriculum based on mastery of standards and of concepts, big ideas such as competencies, rather than judged by seat time or judged by an average of a grade, right? Between did I do my homework and do I know my stuff? So Vanguard Vision really is that embodiment of the separation between academics and the behavioral portion of school. And so it all came to fruition last year after a lot of hard work, and these are some of our really awesome kids. And I think a testament to the program is you could really pick pretty much anybody from the program, and they could be sitting up here telling you today about themselves and why the program works for them. It's really a malleable model that allows us to really reach every single student in the best way possible. So they're here today to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit what they like about the program. Yeah? Yeah.
We didn't rehearse this, so this is all new for you guys. Why don't we go down the line, introduce yourselves, tell us what grade you're in, and a little bit about what you've gotten out of the program so far.
I'm Kyle Kowalski, and I'm a sophomore. I enjoy Vanguard because we can not only work at our own pace, but we can also jump ahead. If we're like excelling in a certain topic, we can move on to like the next unit.
My name is Lauren Courtney. A little confusing, I know. Who, I'm in my sophomore year, and through the Vanguard program, I've learned how to use my time wisely, and I've been a bit more persevering than I have before. And I've fixed a lot of my past procrastination issues. I had that a lot through my middle school. And I think just having that through, like all through my freshman year has really helped me understand and do better in high school.
I'm a student student. I'm a sophomore. What I really liked about Vanguard is the flexibility. You get to choose your classes for the week, and that gives you a lot of time to like talk to your teachers when you're confused, get the help that you need, and I feel like I've never really gotten that before. I could feel like almost scared to go to my teachers, but with Vanguard, it's very, I don't know, you just get that freedom and independence that I've never really gotten before.
I'm Joey Dollard. I'm a sophomore. And what I really like about the program is it helps me get a better understanding of my learning, where I can really dive in and get in-depth, and it's refining my executive functioning skills like time management.
I'm Zach Lightsky. I'm a sophomore. The thing that I like most is it's competency-based, so you tackle most of the main idea things instead of worrying about like smaller parts of units. And I think that helps like the overall understanding of different topics.
Excellent. Excellent. Very, very well done, and I think you guys can run the rest of the meeting because you're clearly no procrastination, you're all ready and everything. So, we're gonna go up and take a picture with you guys, but thank you for leading us in the place. Thank you all very much.
If I could real quick, just take the platform while it's there. I think that, I want to thank the Vanguard students and Mrs. Cassir for coming and representing the high school so well. I think the Vanguard Vision Program is an excellent example of what makes Huntley 158 a special place. Not many schools or districts have a school board or administration that are willing to take the risks on an innovative idea that is truly revolutionizing what education is. And what's happening in Vanguard is exactly what should be happening in education, is we are changing based on what our students need and what they want for their education. It's not what we want them to know, it's what they're, the direction that they're headed in their lives, and we're giving them the tools that a traditional education just can't give. So we're evolving in the right direction, and Vanguard is an excellent example of that. So, thank you all.
Okay. With that, uh, do we have any public comment for this meeting? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to item four, which is revision and adoption of the agenda. We do have something under legislative. We have some strategic plantings looking on. Looks like, uh, well, is there anything that needs to be revised or adopted on the agenda that's existing? I don't see anything. Okay. There being silence, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. This is a voice call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then we'll move on to legislative. I'm looking for... Here we go. Uh, there's a lot of bill signings that took place down in Springfield the last couple of weeks or so. Sorry, I didn't have my report completely ready for this. The one that I'm looking for, I can't seem to find. You know what, I'm going to call an audible here, and I'm gonna go, I'm gonna leave this. Unless somebody has something from the committee that they want to add that knows about this, I'm gonna come back to this because I can't find the report right now, so, okay, and that's on me. So, let's, let's hold off on that and table that. Let's move on to the 6.1, which is the strategic planning measures, Dr. Rowe. Okay?
All right, it's that time of year where we present our annual strategic planning measures. These measures are the, um, the growth areas that administration has set to specifically target in our progress toward achieving the ultimate goal, the five goals of our strategic plan. This being the final year of the strategic plan in its current existence, so to highlight some of the areas of particular interest in front of you. Goal number one, student achievement. The top two goals are the same as they were last year. We just recalibrated that 84% of our students will meet or exceed their projected growth target as laid out in the ECRIS model. Something a little bit different that we've done in the second indicator, where we, we highlight our English language learners and our students with, um, with learning challenges, is we've broken them out into individual goals instead of grouping them together as one goal area. And what we found is, is that this last year, we actually did not meet that goal, but we did meet it in three of the four subgroup areas. And we wanted to single those out because I think there's some celebrations that can be had over some, some great growth. And you'll notice those numbers, they changed from, from last year. If you reviewed last year's measures, they were much different. And I'll point out that primarily in our English language learners who saw significant growth in meeting, in the percentage of students meeting their projected growth target, these goals adjust based on the percentage of growth those students achieve. So those numbers recalibrated and are set much higher than they were the year prior as we continue to progress in improving those, those areas of learning. Moving on, this dual-language program continues to grow. Our, we are offering dual-language programs in our kindergarten first and second grade across the district, and we'll continue to work with that program and develop that in preparation of rolling that into third grade next year. Vanguard Vision is continuing to grow as well. It will progress into its third year next year, and there's a lot of preparation taking place as that program continues to develop. This year, we implemented a new teacher grade book that is much improved, and then some enhanced communication tools. And then later in the year, you'll see some of the personal, personal learner profile and what the HOWLs have evolved into. We've added an extra L to the HOWL. It's now habits of work, life, and learning, which is evolving in the right direction, and we believe can translate much beyond just Vanguard program itself. We continue to work with our efforts towards personalization of learning. What's different here is we are no longer indicating each curriculum review area as progress towards that personalization. It's an overarching umbrella goal of, um, of personalizing learning, and all of those curriculum reviews are laid underneath that umbrella goal, working towards that, that common goal of personalizing education. We did single out the elementary literacy portion of our personalization efforts, the interdisciplinary units, because you have allocated significant resources to the development of those interdisciplinary units. And I can tell you that work is going exceptionally well right now. The nationally renowned consultants that we are working with are telling us that no one in the country is doing what we're doing well. So we have a tall task in front of us to be sure we're doing it well, but we're definitely headed in the right direction and believe that this is the future of what personalization at the elementary level will look like. And what's exciting about this is we're wrapping social-emotional learning into the tier-one classroom in the construction of these units to try and assist teachers in how to, to support the emotional needs of students. All right, moving on to goal number two.
Quick clarification question on 1.1 through 1.6. Are those basically kind of the same thing, just calibrated different to different marks? The wording just changed a little bit. I just wanted to make sure.
1.1 and 1.2 is the same number because as a part of the ECRIS program, that's the target. Those percentages did change based on how much students grew last year. So a new, a new number was, a new number was set. Is that hitting you?
Yeah, I guess 1.3 through 1.6. I know they're different numbers, but the wording's also different than 1.1 and 1.2, but effectively is the same concept.
Effectively, I believe that it is.
Yeah, it's just a difference.
Yep, just the, the main difference is that 1.1 and 1.2 are growth goals. So in other words, 84% of students will meet or exceed their projected growth. And then the others are who, how, what percentage of students are hitting a proficiency target. So what percent of students meet or exceed above this level that they're targeting? Does that make sense?
Yeah. It's a good question, Mr. Gentry. I explained that wrong. I said growth goals, and it was actually hitting a benchmark.
Okay, got it.
But the, the way in which those are still growth goals is that the actual projected target for those subgroups is based on where we expect them to be when they grow.
Right, right, got it. Any other questions on goal one? All right, goal two. As you know, in the, in the 18-19 school year, we conducted a comprehensive school safety audit. Tonight, in closed session, I'll be able to go over and highlight for you what those specific areas are that will be targeted based on that audit. I'll share that with you when we go into executive session later. As for the, the next two are, we also conducted a social-emotional learning needs assessment and an equity and education needs assessment. And these goals are the action steps that are coming out of those needs assessments that we conducted last year that will result in implementation and in a comprehensive plan, a report to the board later in the school year. Are there questions on goal two that we can answer for you? All right. Goal three has to do with quality staff. We continue to, to focus on recruitment and, and bring in a diverse staff. We've seen some, some good strides in that area with Mr. Zier in our HR department as well as principal recruitment. We'll look to continue that, that effort. We also have, as you know, we added a director of professional learning to our curriculum team this year. So, uh, over the course of the year, we will be overhauling our professional learning system and developing a comprehensive profile of what professional learning in District 158 looks like. This is a, a very important endeavor as, and the investment that we can make in our teachers and your ability to evolve in the classroom is a direct representation of our students' growth and learning. So, um, we, this has been an area of needed focus for some time, and we're really excited about the progress that Mrs. Love and our curriculum department is making thus far. But we'll have an update and presentation on what that system will look like for you later in the school year. We'll also be looking at our logistical structures of professional learning communities. You made a, a significant investment in collaboration time, especially at the, at the elementary level this year by allowing us to build that into the workday. So we'll be spending that time working with principals and the teacher teams on how they're using the collaboration time to enhance the professional learning communities with the expectation that that translates into student, enhancing the student learning growth and operating of the community through planning, assessment, analysis, and then response to what they're learning through their data analysis. So we have, we thought appropriate to have a PLC goal in there so we can monitor the use of that time that we were allotted. And then finally, we'll be, you know, we all, we all have heard we have a shortage in, in teachers in the state of Illinois and nationwide, and that shortage in teachers, if it hasn't already, is going to result in a shortage of people interested in leadership. And we also know that investing in our own to develop a pipeline of Huntley 158 teachers who want to become leaders in our school district and take on the assistant principal roles and principal roles and ultimately district office roles. So we want to take a look at, um, this is not a new endeavor. We've done it in the past. We want to take a new look at our leadership pipeline. And Ms. Lombardi and I will be investing in, in how we can kind of grow our own and develop a program to, to build that internal capacity. Any questions on goal three? Uh, goal four, heading into partnerships with the community, Mr. Armstrong's area. As you know, we've engaged in the strategic planning process. Our, our first community engagement session, which is coming up later this month, we will begin advertising that important information on Monday via social media and Media Blitz. That's going extremely well. Mr. Fleck and Mr. Troy are sitting on that facilitation team. We've got some, there's some great events planned for that, but that, that goal is huge in terms of rolling this, this plan over to renewing it. We'll also be enhancing our offerings in Huntley Parent University to bring pertinent, real, really specific and, and high-interest topics to help educate parents. Help educate parents on how to support their child, whether it be in school as well as in life, in dealing with some of the major challenges, whether it be social media. We did, had a great session on vaping last spring that received a lot of positive feedback and the media's continued to run with. But we want to continue supporting our parents in ways that, uh, that support their struggles. Challenging time to be a parent, that's for sure. Establishing specific students' learning goals and opportunities with partnerships. As you know, we've been focusing on partnerships for a long, long time. There's a great partnership with, with Northwestern as well as a number of other local businesses. And we want to look to continue to grow those and spend some more time developing partnerships that really tap into some of the specific learning opportunities that our students have that we haven't developed yet, like for instance, in engineering. Has made some great headway with, with High Winds and trying to connect with WiSpine. Mr. Altmaier and I are on the verge of, of a connection with weather. You know, I'm trying to, I'm actually downtown in Northwestern Hospital tomorrow, working to expand the offerings of our medical academy for students to see what, you know, not hospital life is like in the city, let alone in the suburbs. And then we'll also be continuing presenting at high visibility nationwide or state conferences as well as seeking nationwide media coverage just to enhance the reputation of the district, both within the state of Illinois and as well as across the country. Any questions on goal four? And then finally, in goal five is our financial goal. You know, as, as Mr. Altmaier, typically will say, the, the financial stability, our fiscal responsibility helps make everything that we're able to do for our students possible and the opportunities we're able to provide them in the classroom. So we continue to focus on maintaining a healthy fund balance. 25% of the operating budget as well as living within 20% of the state average of, of perfect fuel expenditure, stretching our resources as far as they can go. We, we seek to maintain recognition status with the state and our financial... Um, we, we, we seek to, to maintain recognition status with the state in our financial capacity as well as offering a five-year financial plan, giving you three different options in that five-year, uh, budgeting plan of what we believe could happen, what, uh, we hope happens, and what we hope does not happen. Um, and then ultimately, we continue our energy, uh, efforts. You know, I, I communicated with you. We're working on a groundbreaking ceremony for our school panels. We expect that construction to begin in October and is a major, major accomplishment for the district, but it's only one, it's, it's the biggest area, but it's one area of our continued efforts to, uh, be energy efficient. Uh, and again, divert dollars away from energy costs and into the classroom. And then finally, uh, we'll financially support all of our personalized learning efforts as that remains, uh, the priority of the district as we evolve, uh, into the future. Any questions on goal five? All right. If no questions, I would, uh, hope to have an approval of our measures, uh, at the board meeting. Thank you.
Just a quick reaction to, to everything. I really like what's put together here and, uh, I think there's good, objective, hard measurements attached where there can be. And then there's somewhere it's just more of a vague, you know, I think that's going to be a challenge to judge at the end, but I think it's, it's well put together and I think it, uh, lays out the framework pretty well.
Well, and some of those that are, that are valid point, and I, you know, my competitive nature does not like to achieve all one hundred percent of our goals, but if we achieve a hundred percent of our goals, we're not setting big enough goals. And, you know, we've said that here over and over, but some of the vague goals are a progression. We started a lot of major initiatives last year. Uh, and it was really a, a win for us that we aren't coming forth this school year with another major initiative to roll out. It's a continuation of some of that work, which speaks to some of those vague goals, that ongoing work. But that ongoing work will ultimately culminate in some major changes for the school district and our ability to offer a truly comprehensive social emotional, um, support package for our students, um, and especially in enhancing the, uh, equity in education that we're offering. That's going to be a very heavy lift and a lot of hard work by all of us. Um, but it's also gray area work that we have to do in order to be right by our students.
And I'd also like to tie in, you add to some of the investments that we specifically talked about over the course of the year and kind of tie these back into that. That was a, a, a good feature and good to hear.
Yeah, I, I just want to follow up. The, the, really excited to be part of that strategic planning committee. We've got a great cross-section of the district. We've got a lot of energy in the group. I think we're going to have really good input from everybody and I, I think that's going to translate out to getting the community involved in this and I, I'm really excited about the direction it's ongoing. Okay, now I'm going to go back to what I was trying to do fifteen minutes ago. I want to explain what the problem was. I clicked on the wrong link and I couldn't find any of the bills that I was trying to talk about because they added a link and I didn't realize that. So, uh, back to legislative, um, I just want to point out, and this is informational. The governor did enact the forty thousand dollar minimum teacher salary law, which was House Bill twenty seventy-eight. Now, that doesn't directly affect District one fifty-eight, but the fact that it's a statewide initiative and it, it's graduated over, uh, the next four years or so, uh, to get, uh, minimum teacher salaries up to forty thousand dollars certainly will help a lot of the downstate, um, districts. That is going to have a ripple effect on, on education in the state. So it is something we need to be aware of. We need to see how that impacts, um, education statewide and budgeting and funding. So, uh, it's, but it is the law now. We're going to be, uh, keeping an eye on that. A couple of other bills, um, of note, there's just two more that I really wanted to point out. With the legalization of cannabis in Illinois, there's going to be a number of, of bills that are, uh, and, and laws that need to be enacted on how that, uh, impacts, uh, school districts, public school grounds, et cetera. Uh, one recently is House Bill one sixty. It's, um, it's just, uh, an example of, of this sort of issue and it had to do with enhanced penalties for delivering cannabis in, on school property and how that would, uh, they took it away from schools that are no longer operational. But look for that, um, over the next few years also because we really have to try and figure out how that looks in education as well. And finally, House Bill twenty-eight sixty-eight, which, um, is just a note for, for me is the State Board of Education is going to develop a work-based learning database to help facilitate relationships between school districts and businesses and expand work-based learning in the state. That's, uh, uh, effective, um, already, uh, August of twenty nineteen, um, but that's, as you heard in the strategic plan, the sort of thing that we've been doing already and trying to develop those relationships with the, with the business community in the district. So, sorry for the delay on that and, uh, that ends the legislative committee. So let's move over to curriculum and I'll turn it over to Mr. Darren.
Thank you, Mr. Fleck. Seven dot one, the WeVideo contract. Dr. Slicker.
Yes, this is a pretty straightforward renewal. WeVideo is, um, an application that we've been using with our students for quite a few years now, uh, Dr. Bazinski, probably three or four years.
Yeah, right from that.
Yeah, right around there. Um, what it does is it allows our students, uh, with Chromebooks to use video applications, which when we had our, our Kuno tablets, which obviously had other problems, they could do video. Got the Chromebook, so we needed to have an additional app in order to do videos. So, pretty straightforward. We're able to realize some savings if we, um, enter into a three-year agreement and since we've been in a long-term, uh, uh, relationship with them already on, on year-to-year contracts, we are comfortable recommending a three-year agreement with WeVideo.
Any questions, concerns?
No, I'm here.
All right, then I'll recommend we move it forward.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question? So just on, uh, I see you have options for professional development. Do we, are we going to need to get any of that?
No, we're not going to be getting any of the professional development. We've had it. It's been a stable application. Um, and then internally, we have our instructional coaches and Mrs. Yocas, who is our teacher on special assignment for instructional tech support as well.
So it's just limited to the subscription, the recommendation?
Pardon me?
Then you're just, it's just limited to the three-year subscription as a recommendation?
Yes, just a three-year subscription.
Any other comments, questions? I recommend then that we move it to the board meeting and move on to section eight. Mr. Gentry.
All right. First item is, uh, eight point one, human resource report. Mr. Zier.
So for the human resource report, um, business as usual in HR, but a couple of highlights. Um, we have our annual salary reports, um, that will be coming to the board at the regular meeting in September and we need to have posted online by October first. So, working through those right now for the teacher and administrator report and a separate report for IMRF. There are some notes at the bottom of that memo, uh, that describe that. So, um, I will have that at your place for the September board meeting.
Great. Any questions? Okay. Eight dot two, hearing officer contract. Again, fairly straightforward. Anything to add?
Yeah, this is just an update to the annual contract, um, to have Mr. Ari as the hearing officer for the nineteen twenty school year.
I think he's, uh, well qualified, so.
Yeah, he knows what he's doing.
Okay, any, uh, questions or concerns on that? If not, we will take that forward. And then eight point three is the enrollment update. Mr. Zier.
Dr. Bazinski will update on enrollment.
You have in your packet, um, a report that we produce annually this time of year, uh, that recaps where we're at in terms of six-day enrollment numbers. We basically have all of our schools track attendance for those first six days, match class rosters up against, uh, enrolled students in our student data systems just to make sure we have the most accurate representation of our student population. I've included numbers, if you look at the, the first page of the, the, the data, um, the data fold sheet, included numbers from this time last year. This is broken down by building by grade. So, y- you can see that the, the numbers ebb and flow a little bit. You can see pockets of, of student populations move up through the system from year to year. The, the second page of the report is actually kind of the big picture where we are as a district. Our current number, six-day enrollment number for this year officially is, like, I couldn't even make this up if I tried, nine thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. So nine one five eight. I couldn't make that up if I tried. That's our official number for the year. You look at that number, it is in fact, uh, one hundred and seventy-seven students less than last year. The majority of that decrease can be attributed to the fact that we graduated nearly seven hundred and fifty students and our incoming kindergarten class was about five hundred and fifty. So that's a difference of two hundred right there. Um, that number goes down a little bit by, based on the fact that our kindergarten numbers are actually up from last year by thirty-four. That's almost the entirety of the difference then, of the one hundred and seventy-seven difference. So our numbers over the last few years have been trending downward. We have a, still have a positive outlook that that won't last terribly long based on upcoming construction, mostly in Talomar and other areas around the community. So we do expect the numbers to, to plateau a bit. Um, it may take us a little bit of time to get to that plateau though. Um, we may still see, see some drop, but again, we can't predict that from year to year based on kindergarten enrollments. And kindergarten enrollment's always a guess and we try to estimate what kindergarten enrollment's going to look like. We've actually started working with, with some of the developments around to, to try to better project that, um, to start asking questions of, if you're moving into some of these new construction areas, are you already in the district? Are you new to the district? Do you have younger students than we should expect in future years? I'm asking those sorts of questions to get a better handle on what to expect in the future. So, I'd have to entertain any questions.
Just out of curiosity, I was just kind of following the diagonals based on the point you made on relative stability between the two endpoints. Actually pretty uncanny. Is that extra strong from a retention standpoint historically?
It's been, it's certainly been our trend. We don't, we don't tend to see a lot of move outs, move ins. In the amount of time that, that I've been tracking this data and even just in, in technology alone, these numbers are very, very stable once the students are in our system. Our growth numbers from year to year have never really been that big. Um, in, at least in the last six or eight years, we certainly had years of massive growth. We have not seen that really. The other side of that is when we do have decreases, they're, they're not as drastic as what some, some other districts in the area are seeing. So we're a bit more stable, I think.
I mean, I'm kind of reading retention as a, as a good sign.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And just to add, we're, we're still seeing a, a good number of move-ins as well.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely. So if you, if you look at some of these, it doesn't necessarily show in the numbers because there's some, um, move-arounds in the district and move-ins. We do still see a fair number of, of move-ins. And of course, anytime we ask them, then, you know, what brings them to the community, more often than not, it's because of the schools. So we, we still do see that, um, especially which I, I think you really see in our kindergarten numbers, um, and the fact that our kindergarten numbers are already coming back up. So that's a, it's a positive trend that we hope to see again coming next year. We're, we're definitely glad to see that already.
We have some initial, initial, I guess, I don't, I don't, concern's not the right word, but some initial interest in, in what the, the development of, uh, Talomar was going to bring to us, especially with Yi. Um, and after visiting with their, uh, their sales office, it's actually the people that are in the townhomes so far that are the majority of the buyers of the single-family homes that are already in our school district at Li Yi. And they're just upgrading. Um, so we continue to monitor that. They had fifty-five sites available and twenty-three of them, I think, sold in the first month and a half. You know, they're continuing to go up like crazy. But if, if they open up a new phase, that'll be, that'll be the time to really tell, um, how much more growth we can expect. And we'll be, we'll be, we'll come back to, to you with that when we have that information.
All right. Anything else? If not, uh, we will turn it over to the finance committee, Mr. Quagliano.
Okay, finance. Nine dot one, we have our payables, purchase orders and press checks and disbursements. Uh, any questions, concerns over those items?
Nope.
Okay, we will move that forward to the board for approval. Um, nine dot two, revenue and expenditures report. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you do have the July two thousand and nineteen financial executive summary, uh, compared against the FY twenty, um, tentative, uh, budget, which you see in front of you, which will be the budget we present, uh, at the budget hearing two weeks from today. So as a reminder on that. Um, really nothing to report first month, uh, first month of the, uh, of the fiscal year. We are trending, uh, where we should be. Um, if you, if you did look at the numbers, you'll see that purchased services, uh, approximates twenty-one percent of the overall, uh, tentative budget for the year. Um, that's typically what we see year over year because we pay for all of our insurance, usually in the first month of the year from property and liability to workman's comp. Um, other than that, um, nothing else to report. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have on the executive summary.
I have no question?
Nope.
No? Okay. It's fine. Thank you for that info. Well, we'll move to nine dot three, which is our revenue contracts. We have two revenue contracts there. Do we have any questions or concerns on those two contracts?
Nope.
No? Okay, we will move those forward to the board for approval and we'll move on to nine dot four, which is our monthly fiscal reports. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. Only, uh, two or three things to report here, uh, fairly quickly. Uh, the two thousand and nineteen audit is completed. Uh, we're still waiting for the final report to come through from, from our audit, uh, partner. Uh, we expect that within the week and so that is in process. And the audit, uh, partner will be here in, at the October board meeting to present, uh, the FY nineteen, uh, financial results. So stay tuned for that. Uh, the budget and five-year plan, again, as a reminder, in two weeks from today, we will have a budget hearing to present the FY twenty budget. Um, everything's looking good. We did receive a lot more information from the state, so we were able to kind of lock and load a lot of our, uh, state grants, uh, tweak, uh, tweak some of the expenses associated with those grants. So, uh, we were still able to stay fairly close to where we were the last time I presented the, um, budget. Um, so stay tuned for that in two weeks. And I think lastly, what you do not have on, on the fiscal updates is within the week, we were contacted by, uh, Piper Jeffrey, Eric Anderson, and we all know Eric and, and Bob Lewis from, from PMA with an opportunity or a potential opportunity to, for debt restructuring. I think we all know we have a mountain of debt coming due, um, in fiscal years twenty-one and twenty-two. And specifically, the next phase of that restructuring was going to be for the two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen debt series. And with interest rates now at an all-time low, over the last several months they've been declining, uh, we thought it was a good opportunity to at least look at that from a break-even standpoint to see, well, is it truly an opportunity? Should we be looking at restructuring and refunding, um, that, that we have today? Now, please remember the two thousand and four, thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, and really all the remaining debt we have, um, are capital appreciation bonds that are not callable. Right? So if we refund and restructure those debts today, um, it's like obtaining financing today for something you're going to build two years from now. Right? Like a, a house. Um, and the reason I say that is because it's capital appreciation debt, we would have to escrow all that money. And for instance, if, uh, let me throw out a few, when we did the break-even analysis, we found out that if we were to refund the two thousand and fourteen bonds, the break-even, um, shows that it's a hundred and sixty-five basis points difference, meaning that if we were to refund the two thousand and fourteen debt today, interest rates would have to increase a hundred and sixty-five basis points for us to, um, for it not to be worth our while, if that makes sense. In other words, if we wait and interest rates from today go up a hundred and sixty-five basis points, we'd be better off waiting to refund that debt in fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. The last time interest rates spiked a hundred and sixty-five basis points? Never. I don't want to say never, but a very long time, especially over a two-year window. The break-even on the two thousand and thirteen bonds is eighty-five basis points. So we did a little extra work on that and we talked through that with Bob Lewis and, and Tony and I had a, a chance to talk through that, um, that debt. And just to give you an example, if, if the interest rates, if the interest rate environment stays relatively the same as to where it is today and we opted to move forward by restructuring that debt today, and again, rates stayed the same, and then we were to do this, if we were to do this two years from now instead of today, that difference in net debt service that we would levy to the community would be about four million dollars. That's what eighty-five basis points is quantified to. Um, the chances of rates increasing eighty-five basis points, I don't want to say are slim to none. However, when you look at the economy and you look that we know we could benefit from future Fed rate cuts, um, we can maybe benefit, uh, and this is a long shot, but we all know, remember, we have the Illinois impact here. We have the Illinois effect that Illinois is so, so underperforming that that input, impact to our interest rate is currently about thirty to forty basis points. So if, if in the next two years, we actually start to figure out how to balance our budget and we bring that Illinois effect down a little bit, well, that increases that eighty-five basis point to maybe a hundred, to maybe a hundred and fifteen basis points. So we are opting to kind of stay put with, with, um, and not do. So we are opting to kind of stay put with, with, and not do anything at this point in time. We certainly think it was worth the effort to understand and quantify what that differential is, but certainly where we are with the economy, knowing that there's Fed rate cuts coming down the pipeline, or we feel that are coming down the pipeline, and knowing that we do have an opportunity, or the state has an opportunity to kind of hopefully move in the right direction, we think we're better off staying kind of put. One last note on the federal funds rate, we were looking at our bank investment rates over the last several months, and our, our deposit account rates have decreased from 2.2 in July to 2.05 at the end of August, and are now are sitting at 1.95. And having discussed that with PMA and discussing that with our bank, which is Bank of China, where we keep a lot of our deposit account, which by the way, it's a good state, so everybody knows, the reason we're seeing some of that, some of that decline is simply because they're anticipating the Fed rate cut the week of September 18th. Not too far off. So, that's just a perfect example of where we think we're going, and another reason we should stay put at this time.
And, and the, the other reason is, we just, we, we have a bunch to finance, and we got to do it in the, you know, in like two years. So it's, it's not cost-effective to do these in little chunks all the time. If you can kind of wait it out, and if you think the horizon's going to be favorable over the next couple of years, then it's worthy of, of kind of waiting it out.
Correct. And the 2013 series debt, that's $75 million today. In two years, it'll be approximately $70 million. So we're not talking about a little six to nine million-dollar restructuring.
That is a thing.
That will be one of the largest restructurings that we have done today, when we do that one. So, we are better off waiting and, and trying to ride out this, these interest rates because they're capital appreciation bonds, and they're not callable. Anything else to add, Tony?
No, we just wanted to make everybody aware. We, they presented an opportunity, we looked at it, and, well, it's okay, it's not, not the only reason.
And to be clear, this, this opportunity was not part of what we had talked about in the past. This was a little blip of an opportunity.
Yeah, with interest rates, you know, coming down to where they are today, it was definitely worth the exercise.
Again, you got to remember, our guys who consult, they also, they make money transactionally when they do stuff. So, they're just being good. It's an opportunity, but they're also just, you know, picking it, see how things are going.
So, if I can restate your break-even, just so I, I think I get it, is if you were to do this and rates went up something greater than 165 or 85 basis points, we would be ahead of the game. So, without that movement, it's a money loser. The restructuring.
Right.
Right, got it.
Which is why we're not doing it.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We don't view the risk being significant enough that low.
I feel like the whole class figured this out before me, so I'm finally.
Yeah, I don't know if we figured it out, but that's.
If we feel that, the bottom line is, on the 2013, the 85 basis point, if we feel like in two years that interest rates are going to climb more than 85 basis points, we should pull the trigger today.
Yeah, we would be doing it.
But, but we don't.
But we don't. Yeah, we all work snack or something to have another way to say it.
Yep.
Actually, it was a better way to say it. Anything else on the monthly fiscal update? If not, then we just, we have our Activity Fund Report. Any questions or concerns regarding that?
Nope.
Then I'm done in building a ground. Mr. Troy.
Thank you. Item 10 dot 1, Monthly O&M Updates. Anything on there to highlight, Mr. Rancasek?
Just a few things. We're actively trying to close lifecycle projects for this year very minimal punchless. We're starting to engage consultants for summer of '20, projects, FY '20 projects. We will be bringing an agreement to the board as one of them for approval at the September 19th meeting for the Civil Engineering Services related to the project we talked about at the August presentation, which is the Conley McCabon Car Lot and Bus Lot Pavement Improvement Project, which we'd like to get design going, get out to bits and get bits in hand before the parking lots are buried in snow, hopefully. And that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Any questions from the committee or the board? All right, thank you very much. Item 10 dot 2, Change Order Number Three to Contract with Weather Guard Grouping. Mr. Rancasek again?
Um, the agenda says change order three, but it's actually number one.
Ah.
My apologies.
I see it in the moment.
Yes, they did. My apologies. The, this is a reconciliation of work that's been uncovered, replacement of bad plywood when we ripped shingles off at the high school in the administration center. We have an allowance in the bid. The second page in the, the packet there does run you through the exercise of what's in the allowance, the unit prices that the bidder provided, and the actual counts that were witnessed as the project progressed. And in addition, we reconcile the expenses for background checks. So, for a net credit to the district, we have $11,587.50.
That's always a good thing, will we get a credit like that? Any questions from the committee or the board? Any objections with moving that forward then? All right, we'll move that ahead. Item 10 dot 3, Change Order Number Three this time.
Thank you. Our Summer of 2019 Asphalt Pavement Improvements Projects, we called it for Lihe and Heinemann School. Our construction engineer who tracked the project and their office team of HR Green and I and Arrow Paving Net to talk about reconciliation of those adjustments to the final cost. There's a whole list in there that was included in the packet for your review. Rather than go into particular details, I'd just tell you I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm sure you've read this long list of items here. I think it's good news again. It's a net credit to the district of $19,913.85.
Any questions from the committee or the board? Again, credits are always good. All right.
Just a quick housekeeping. When we do the regular board meeting and this goes on consent agenda, let's make sure we fix change order one and change order three for these items.
No problem. 10 dot 4, Fine Arts Edition Update.
We've got the fence up there pretty quick after board award of the trade packages. It looks like not much is going on, but in the background, there's a lot of paperwork and planning going on. We've already had a couple of construction planning meetings. We've invited a fire marshal out and with our architect's input, have a blessing on a fire egress plan during construction that's reasonable and acceptable and safe. Our security team has done a great job, I think, of, in assisting with the planning of the flow around the property during this time when this construction fence is up there. We had already in planning phases to re-release the electric bid package with the reduced scope of work. We should be publishing notice Monday and intend to bring bids to the board for approval on October 10th. We're asking for a special meeting because we're going to be on the verge of meeting in a, some electrical conduit to be installed in walls that are going to be constructed, we hope. If we are not prepared, or we get a earlier start on the construction, I do not want to slow it up, and I've instructed LAMF that we should spot hire an electrical contractor to do a couple of sticks of conduit at, at, at time and material basis for what minimal work might be required if such things would develop by then. But things will get a lot busier real soon. Demolition should be in the process of starting right now. And I will hope to have, after the electrical bid is awarded, we'll have a pretty good handle on final costs, and we'll start putting in that financial summary sheet we've done on past projects in your path. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee or the board? All right, thank you very much for that report. Go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Fleck.
Okay. We have 11 point 1, which is meeting minutes from two regular meetings, July and August, as well as the August committee as a whole. Is there any questions or comments on those? If not, we will move forward to the consent agenda, and that concludes the committees. Other than making a motion at 6:55 to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Quagliano. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayurino?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes. Okay, you're in closed session. Thank you.
I believe Peyton Manning said it best.
I quit. I retired.